Would you like to take the meeting?
Thank you. Please, welcome to the City of Westfield, Indiana's city council meeting on Monday, October 14th. May we join me in saying the pledge of allegiance? Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Joining us this evening is Pastor Chris Baklich, the pastor at North Circle Church.
Let's pray. Dear God in heaven, we thank you for who you are and for what you're doing all around us. Even recently, we are reminded, God, that the seasons change so quickly. And as we can feel fall coming on, we're even planning for the end of another calendar year. As we think of this, I pray that you would help us to number our days and remember how each day is really a gift from you. Father, we thank you for a city that has a structure and a longstanding history like Westfield. I pray that you would be with her leaders tonight and everyone represented here, that the decisions that can be made with wisdom and discretion, God, that we could think through what's going to be good for our town, not only now, but for generations to come. God, I pray that you would guide everyone's patience and words and even tempers, hopefully, as we move forward into this meeting and that you would preside over it all. God, we know that you are over it all and we look to you and we trust it all in your hands. In your name, we pray and ask all these things. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. May we note the presence of a quorum?
Joe Deppner. Noah Haron.
Here.
Chad Huff.
Here.
Victor McCarty.
Here.
Patrick Tam.
Here.
Kurt Wanniger.
Here.
John Dart.
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you. This evening, we don't have any changes to the agenda, but I do want to read into the record properly that there was a Scrivener's errand ordinance 24-50, which was adopted on the September 23rd, 2024 meeting. And specifically, money is being transferred to the Public Works Department to 204-013-474, which is the capital outlays. There was simply just a transposition on three numbers. So it is being transferred to the Public Works Department 204-013-474 in capital outlays. Moving on, we have the approval of the minutes from September 23rd, 2024. Assuming that everyone had a chance to review those, we need a motion and a second.
After reviewing the minutes from September 23rd, 2024, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion made by Councilor Wanniger, beat to the punch. Councilor McCarty with the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we call the roll?
Noah Haron.
Yes.
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Moving along, we have the claims docket for October 14th, 2024. Assuming we all had an opportunity to review those, I need a motion and a second.
Motion to approve the claims for October 14th, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion made by Councilor Dart, second by Councilor Haron. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we call the roll?
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Haron.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Mr. Larson, do we have any residents that wish to address the council this evening?
No cards at this time.
Okay, thank you. Moving to old business ordinance 2454, which is the common counsel of the City of Westfield, Indiana, approving the issuance and sale of special taxing district bonds by the city for and on behalf of the Parks and Recreation District of the city to provide for the financing of certain improvements to park facilities. We have Colin Cochran here this evening, I believe, to make this presentation.
Thank you, members of the council. Colin Cochran with both Kenny and Evans were serving as bond counsel for this matter. I'm filling in for my colleague Dennis Otten, who you would have met at the September 23rd meeting when the ordinance was introduced. Ordinance number 2454 authorizes the issuance of up to $12 million in Park District bonds to finance both the Simon Moon Phase Two project and the Park Streetscape project. Both the projects and the issuance of the bonds have been approved by the city's Park District Board, both in their October, September, October meetings. Tonight's actually the last public approval step, so if approved, we would then proceed to selling the bonds in late October and then closing in November. So probably all similar to what Dennis would explain at the last council meeting. But are there any questions or comments? I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions this evening?
Yeah, excuse me, I've got a question. So could you explain a little further detail? We know that approximately 6 million is going to go to the Parks Department for the second phase of Simon Moon Park. And the balance will go to fund some of the initiatives on Park Street. So no issues there, but why the need to do it right now, to issue these bonds right now? In other words, in speaking with Janelle, there's a pretty good idea of how those funds are going to be used on Park Street, but it could be less than 6 million, it could be more than 6 million. So why issuing those now until we have a real hard number?
Yeah, so both the projects, neither project can be over 6.3 million approximately, standard of the controlled project statute. Oscar may chime in as well. You know, part of the reason is doing this issuance now in 2024 allows the city to maintain its current property tax levy. Oscar, if you have anything else you want to add to that.
Thank you, Councilor Drucker. Oscar Tiers Bond Re Consulting made to this transaction. We answered this question last meeting, I believe you were not in attendance. Part of the reason why we're going through this is in the past, the city has issued general obligation bonds in order to fulfill maintaining our tax levy steady. So as of right now, the goal for the city is to maintain the same tax rate as it had in the previous year, without any tax increases. And we wanted to do two projects that fell under the parks purview, which both of these checked that box. And we wanted to ensure that they were under the $6.3 million threshold, which would kick them into a controlled project. If it would have been over 6.3, it would have taken longer, wouldn't have been able to accomplish this in the timeline that we need to do it, which is no later than December, around the time that we received the 1782 from the state. So we back into a payment that will be sufficient to maintain our tax rate. And this is part of our strategy that goes alongside our tax levy appeal. So if our tax levy appeal was to be denied for whatever reason, we don't believe it will be, but assuming that it could, then we would make that first bond payment higher to eat that up. And we just picked two projects that could meet the less than $6.3 million that could be utilized this year before December.
Appreciate the detailed response, thank you.
Any other questions this evening? Seeing none, we need a motion and a second, as this is old business, if we were to consider this this evening. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance 2454.
Second.
We have a motion made by Councilor Huff, second by Councilor McCarty. Any further discussion? Seeing none, may we call the roll?
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Haron.
Yes.
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Great, thank you. Moving on to ordinance 24-56, which is the Trails Two PUD. I believe we have Weston here this evening.
Yep, thank you, President, members of the council. For the record, Weston Rogers with the Community Development Department. The item before you tonight is the Trails Two Planned Unit Development District. This project is roughly one acre in size and it's located at 807 East State Road 32. This property is directly east of the existing crew car wash facility that you see there on the screen. So this proposed PUD would allow for the expansion of the crew car wash on the neighboring property to the east. It's highlighted in yellow there. This item received its first reading at the September 23rd city council meeting. And at the October 7th APC meeting, a unanimous favorable recommendation was forwarded to the council. Tonight, this item is eligible for adoption consideration. The petitioner is here this evening, but they do not plan to make a presentation. So I'll finish by just offering that both staff and the petitioner are available to answer any questions should the council have any. Thank you.
Any questions this evening? I do want to just compliment, Crew provides a lot of first job skills, but then also a new billboard today, which I saw at $60,000 for management as well. So very nice billboards that you have a pretty darn good strategy for upping salaries for a lot of folks as well. But thank you for a lot of first job skills as well. Do we have any further discussion this evening? We need a motion and a second.
Motion to approve ordinance 2456, the Trails Two PUD.
Second.
We have a motion made by Councilor McCarty, second by Councilor Dart. Seeing no other discussion this evening, may we call the roll?
Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Kurt Wanniger.
Yes.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Haron.
Yes.
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. Moving along, ordinance 2457, which is many provisions in the Westfield, Washington Township Unified Development Ordinance, temporary greenhouse expansion. We have Ms. Gillingham Teague this evening. Let me make sure I get that right, I did not last time.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the record, Lauren Gillingham Teague with the Community Development Department. Item before you is the adoption consideration of, just a really quick UDO update. L&amp;M Gardens, a local greenhouse operator, they've been in Westfield for many years. They operate out of Greyhound Plaza. They approached us earlier this year regarding our development standards, temporary use in events relating to temporary greenhouse sales, where it seemed to be a gap in the ordinance, where only holiday tree lots were able to be increased to a 5,000 square foot maximum. Kind of through our discussions, kind of looking back through our archives, we couldn't come up with a good reason why that was so, why we would be looking at trees differently than maybe smaller plants. So this item is before you to rectify that and kind of bring this into a, yeah, bring this code into shape so it works for everyone. So yeah, happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, I've got one quick one, so it seems pretty straightforward, makes a lot of sense. Is there anything in here from a start date and an end date to when the tree lots go up or when the greenhouses go up and come down? Or who manages that? Is that with the retailer that there's an agreement with them that says you need to be out by January 15th if you're selling trees? Because there's nothing in the ordinance, so.
Yes, so yeah, so this is a small excerpt of the ordinance. And the larger ordinance, it goes into the allowed time, how many consecutive days. And yeah, the retailer will, they'll come to an agreement and then they'll meet our requirements as well. So this is no change of the time or duration or anything with that, just they can administratively increase to 5,000.
Okay, so that timing is in there and that's really worked out between the merchant and the business?
Yeah, for the most part, we do have limits. You know, you can't have it 24/7, 365. But yeah, that is elsewhere in our code. I can't think of what it is off the top of my head, unfortunately.
So you don't know the number that makes it temporary, basically?
I cannot remember the number and I feel like if I even guess, it would be way off.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with this change, but like I, at the back of my head, it kind of brings me back to like the food trucks and having an unfair advantage against like actual like nurseries that we have in Westfield that have a permanent. So it's tough, it kind of, it makes me think very similar along the same lines, but that's a different discussion.
Any other questions this evening?
Yeah, Laura, this, Lauren, this might be a question too, you don't know, but as far as a 3,800 square foot tent compared to a 5,000 square foot tent, that's larger, more wind load, those types of things, with some of the recent winds we have, what are the requirements associated with public safety or being inspected by? Is it just inspected by your department or by the fire department or?
Yeah, yeah, fire department looks at it. So tents are a separate permit. So if this temporary greenhouse user wanted to also have a tent, they would apply for a tent permit. There are minimums, there are maximums on that and it also requires an inspection both by, I believe, our staff and the fire department.
Thanks.
Any other conversation this evening, discussion? We need a motion and a second this evening?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2457, amending provisions of the Westfield, Washington Township UDO, temporary greenhouse expansion.
Second.
We have a motion made by Councilor McCarty, second by Councilor Dart. Seeing no other discussion, may we call the roll?
Kurt Wanniger.
No.
John Dart.
Yes.
Joe Deppner.
Yes.
Noah Haron.
Yes.
Chad Huff.
Yes.
Victor McCarty.
Yes.
And Patrick Tam.
Yes.
Motion carries six one.
We have ordinance 2458, which is town-run economic development bond ordinance. Unless my eyes are failing me, I don't see Mr. Bingham, but I believe one of his colleagues is with us this evening. Also joining us wisely is Mr. Hill and his colleagues with Lor Corp, but sir?
Good evening, Mr. President and councilors. My name is Dustin Meeks and yes, I am the Robin to Brad Bingham's Batman. And Brad apologizes.
I always like Robin better.
The colorful costume is definitely better. I couldn't pull off the gravelly voice even if I wanted to and I don't think you'd be intimidated. So in serious news, what I have for you tonight is a bond ordinance for approving a series of economic development revenue bonds of the city. And before this meeting, the Westfield Economic Development Commission had its meeting and held a public hearing on this project and the series of bonds. And they have given their approval and recommendation to the council. This is a second reading of the bond ordinance. And what the bond ordinance authorizes is up to $3.15 million of taxable economic development revenue bonds of the city, which could go out for as long as 25 years. The revenue stream that is backing those bonds is a 50/50 split on tax increment revenues from a site-specific tax increment financing allocation area encompassing the project on 146th Street and Town Road. Am I right about the location there, Adam? The Northwest Corner, which will be developed by Lor Corporation. And Adam and his colleague are here and can talk about the details of the project. The way that the financing is structured is this is what we call a developer purchased bond. So here, the developer will make public improvements to the site. And in exchange for making those public improvements, they will be deemed to have purchased up to $3.15 million worth of bonds of the city. And the city has made a commitment during the 25-year life of those bonds to provide 50% of the tax increment revenue generated in the allocation area encompassing the site to the developer. In the event that something goes wrong or the development doesn't generate the revenues that are projected, it is not an event of default for the city if those bonds are not paid off. So I always say that this structure is kind of the lowest risk option to do economic development incentives. So from the city's perspective, what you get is this really high-quality project. The developer gets a little piece of the upside potential on the improvement of the value of the property. And in the event that if, that anything doesn't work out, the city is at no risk. So the developer sort of takes on the risk that the project will perform so that they can get the value of the bonds. What the ordinance additionally does is it approves two documents. So there is a financing agreement, which is the city's agreement with Lor Corporation as the developer, which governs, it basically just walks through this structure and says that you're going to set aside 50% of the TIF revenues to pay off their bonds. And the other document that it approves is a trust indenture, which is the agreement between the city and a financial institution who will receive the TIF revenues and then make sure that they get paid out on time. So happy to answer any questions that you might have. And I know that Adam is prepared to answer any questions you might have about the project as well.
I have a question for you. On the 50/50 tax increment for the payment, if, let's say 30% covered the bond payment, who gets the other 20?
So if the payments are being made on the schedule, that's all that you would owe.
Okay, the city would keep the rest?
So the city would keep the rest, yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Meeks?
Can I just mention quickly, if you look, there's a red line because there's been a slight change since first reading. That was actually to take the maximum amount down to 3.15 million instead of 3.5 and also just to change controller to clerk treasurer.
Chris, thanks for bringing that up. We're having a hard time accessing that ourselves right now, the red line version.
Can't click it.
Yeah, we can't click it, we're all trying to. Mr. Hill?
I'm Adam Hill with Lor Corporation. This is Phil Suddling. I'm not sure, who's Batman and Robin at times? Thank you for your consideration. We want to pull up kind of a general overview of the project. You all are familiar with the project. We went through it last time, fielded some questions. So this is the site, Northwest Corner, 146th and Town Road. Very crucial site in our mind. This has been a project in the works for quite some time. We went back, got some really good suggestions from the previous plan commission and council. And this is what ended up getting approved, which is, well, not this specific version, but it got approved and we couldn't be more excited about moving the project forward. One of the questions that came up last time was specifically about what's the difference between what was approved in the previous, well, not really previous, but in the current PD? What are we doing differently from what was approved in the current PD to what we're doing now? And Victor has the benefit of being involved for three years prior and now. So really has some in-depth knowledge on everything and he asked some really good questions. We had a chance to touch base today for probably 30 minutes or so and downloaded on everything. So this is an exhibit from the current PD ordinance that shows the commercial area. So I don't know if you can toggle back, but this commercial area is along Town Road. That's not rotating right now, but Town Road is what is running.
East west here.
Yes.
Northwest to your left.
Yep. So the buildings are brought up to Town Road. So a quick overview of the overall project. Lifetime's a $60 million development, 110,000 square feet. It's Lifetime's newest concept. It'll be the first concept of this in the state of Indiana. It has a 50,000 square foot outdoor pool, has eight pickleball courts. Like it is a really special development for Lifetime and I think the community will really love what it is. When we looked at the overall area and what Lifetime's doing, we matched that same level of architecture on our retail buildings, the shopping centers. But what we didn't match, and what you can see in this, we didn't match the landscaping. The PD ordinance was pretty basic on the landscaping. And it kind of, I don't know if it bothered us, but it just warranted much more as the gateway entry into Westfield. So that's the current PD and I want to try to compare a little bit on the current PD and what was approved. So this is what we're proposing and what the funds will be utilized for if this gets voted on and approved tonight. A few of the highlights, what we're doing is we're drastically increasing the usability and enhancing the trail as you come all the way down Town Road. So again, we're Town Road, obviously north and south, but this image can't be rotated. But we're enhancing that all the way down and we have a couple other images we can show you. We're adding golf cart parking, we're enhancing the outdoor patios, we're enhancing the landscaping, we're enhancing all the lighting along that trail. There are approximately 600 homes directly to our north and to our west that are literally within a quarter mile in a 55-plus community. Those folks are going to get on their bikes, they're going to walk, they're going to get golf carts if that is approved in the future. And they're going to come right down this trail, they're going to park their golf cart or park their bike, they're going to walk into the local restaurants and they're going to utilize that. What was previously approved did not even touch the aesthetics and the enhancements that we've shown here. And we have a couple other images. That's just some of the images from a landscaping standpoint. You can see the bike parking. Over on the left, you can see the golf cart parking. As we scroll down a little bit further, that just shows a different view. We have a night view because it's 7:25 and it's dark out right now and it's only going to get worse. But we wanted to light up that entire walkway all the way through the overall development. If people want to go grab some food at 8 o'clock at night and they want to walk, they'll be able to do so. So we wanted to show some of those images because in the previous presentation, I think we had some of them, but we didn't have all of them. So that's some of the enhancements. One of the questions we got during the previous meeting with Economic Development was, are there spots for additional golf cart parking in the event that that demand is much higher? We will have that. The specific area that I think we focused on a majority of the meeting last time, and Victor brought this up, is said, hey, you guys have shown the same exhibit in your enhanced packet that is in the PD. We didn't have time to update that. We now have it, we'll show it to you in just a second. But Studio WIM, who created all the architectural that they're doing, the building, our retail buildings, they came back and put together a rendering with some direction from us on what we see the ultimate enhancements being of the gazebo area. Again, this is going to be a trailhead. Lifetime anticipates 3,000 to 4,000 visitors a day coming into the lifetime. This will get utilized, not only do we have 600 homes within a quarter mile, there's about 4,000 homes within a mile radius of the site. It'll get utilized. As we scroll, if you can scroll up just a little bit. This is what we envision for that trailhead area. Obviously, you have to have the gazebo because it was a commitment made with the current PD that's in place. So you'll have the gazebo. But what we've tried to do here is make it so that it's updated. It allows for, if golf cart parking gets approved, it allows for it. It enhances the hardscape area just to the right. We tried to make it more user-friendly and appeal to more people because we think a lot of people will either meet at the trailhead, will hang out at the trailhead area. It's just going to get used. It can't not get used with the sheer number of people and this general location. And as we talked last time, and I think this resonated, it certainly resonates with us, is this is the gateway. Where's the signage? We didn't have it under the previous plan, but literally across the street, we have Carmel and to the west, a half mile, we have Zionsville. We're proposing a sign. That doesn't necessarily have to be the ultimate location or the look and feel of the sign, but those letters are six feet tall, doesn't look like it in that rendering, but I'm six feet tall. So we're proposing substantial signage and we're happy to work with you or with anybody else. I know signage is something we talked about earlier. We're happy to work with anyone on what that signage ultimately looks like and whether it goes here, whether it goes along Town Road, whether it goes in the proposed roundabout. But this is an opportunity to say welcome to Westfield as you enter this entire market. Another thing that I just thought was interesting and we put this on here. If you scroll down, this is the development on the southeast corner. Well, guess what's on the southeast? That's Carmel. And one thing that, we're talking with two local restaurant groups right now, for example. You, one of those restaurant groups is not in Westfield. You would really love, everybody in the community would love to have that group in Westfield. We have a good relationship with them. And what will land groups like that, what will land tenants like that are enhanced amenities and enhanced features of your overall development. When we look at this, this is a competitor to Westfield. Carmel can land that restaurant group just like Westfield could. This is a really, really busy intersection. All things being equal, they don't, when I say they, most restaurants, most tenants, they don't care whether they go to Westfield, Carmel, or where, as long as they're in this general location. So we took that very seriously and said, okay, how can we make our site the highly sought-after site? Lifetime will do. Lifetime will do that. They will certainly help, they're a big draw. But what also will do it is, can we enhance all the amenities along the corridor to make it so that people truly want to be there? And I think with, with what we're proposing on these renderings, and we're happy to scroll back through any of them, but what we're proposing will achieve that goal, and it's questions that we get asked. Potential tenants ask the question of what, what's the patio space? What's the trails look like? What, all of those things. And I, I don't know if Carmel will approve the golf cart stuff, but that's one way the Westfield separates itself and makes it even better. So, that, what we wanted to do was try to address some of your concerns and kind of just hit head-on, what, what will the funds be used towards, and how is it different from what's currently approved? We're happy to answer any questions or chat through.
Thank you, Adam. Any questions this evening? Counselor McCarty?
Yeah, I'll just jump in. As Mr. Hill alluded to, with my prior experience, a little bit bigger, not, pun intended, I didn't realize I was about to say this, but hill to climb for me was that distinguishing what is already required for the current PUD, again, you mentioned it was a three-year process to try to get where we are today, versus what could be elevated above that. So, I did have my reservations coming into tonight's meeting, but through discussion as well as the visuals, I'm, I'm a visual person, and seeing kind of that before and after, that, that's helped ease me a little bit, and I appreciate you coming forward with this and the possible partnership to be able to create this corridor in Westfield that does have a distinct character for where people want to be.
Any other discussion this evening? I've seen none. We need a, a motion and a second.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2458, town run, economic development bond ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion made by Counselor Waniger, seconded by Counselor Heron. Any other discussion this evening? Seeing none, maybe we call the roll.
Absolutely. Trying to make sure there's no issue. John Dart?
Yes.
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Noah Heron?
Yes.
Chad Huff?
Yes.
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Kurt Waniger?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you, Mr. Hill, and frankly, for your commitment to continuing to really up the game in Westfield. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business this evening, this is a first, first reading, an introduction only for ordinance 2452, which is a 2025 non-elected salary ordinance. I believe this will be presented this evening by Ms. Carrie Tolan.
Yes, good evening, council members. Before you, again, this is just an introduction of the 2025 salary ordinance for the city of Westfield. Set forth before you is the maximum salaries and wages, benefits and stipends and other compensations for appointed positions and employees for the 2025 calendar year. In accordance with the Indiana law, the ordinance outlines compensations for the city employees and members, including police and fire department, as well as the clerk treasurer's office. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer those, but hopefully you guys have had time to review this.
Any questions this evening? Discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to the next ordinance, which is 2453, which is the 2025 Elected Officials' Salary Ordinance. Will be presented by a clerk treasurer, Marla Taylor.
Very similar to what the deputy mayor just explained to you. This covers mayor, my salary, and all of you councilors, as well as additional compensation for 2025. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Any questions? I know there were some questions on a couple things, but frankly, I know they're all being addressed. This is, again, just an introduction, and we'll address, address those things at the next meeting.
I think those questions I did respond to.
They already been?
2:30, and, and make sure that gets forwarded on to everybody else, but otherwise.
Great.
We had a couple typos that we corrected over the course of the day.
You handle a few numbers throughout the day. Thank, thank you very much for that. This evening, moving along, we have Resolution 24150, which is a common counsel of the city of Westfield, Indiana, approving certain, certain matters in connection with the South Park Economic Development Area. Ms. Fairman, I believe, is making a presentation this evening.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first economic development area that we are reviewing tonight is the South Park Economic Development Area. And if you'll remember, just recently, we've approved a South Park Economic Revitalization Area, which is similar, but not the same. And before I explain exactly what's happening with this one, I want to talk a little bit about what the difference is between the two and why we're presenting this right now. So, the South Park Economic Revitalization Area was set up last month with an expanded perimeter. South Park Economic Revitalization Area already existed, but did not include all of the parcels within the South Park Industrial Area. We don't have the map attached here. The purpose of the expansion was to make sure that any abatements that we were pursuing in that area were available to all of the parcels within that industrial park and not just some of them. We are now also introducing an economic development area. The purpose of that is to give us flexibility where if we are trying to attract a business to that area of the city, that we are able to either use tax increment financing, or we could use an abatement to incentivize a project to happen. So, for example, if we were going to bring a building to be, or a tenant to be a new business located within an existing building, we might offer them a personal property abatement for the equipment that they were bringing into that development. But if we were looking for headquarters that wanted to locate in this area and build something new, we might be more likely to do a tax increment financing project to build something that's greater than what was there before, and possibly enhance some of the surrounding area, including the Monon that runs just east of South Park. So, this is the, this is the third step in the development of this economic development area. It was introduced at the Redevelopment Commission last month. It has gone through approval at the Plan Commission, now is coming to you guys, and then we'll go for a public hearing, and we'll then have, receive a confirmatory resolution at the RDC meeting in October. Happy to answer any questions. My apologies for not having a map here. This is generally located in the South Park Industrial Complex area, just west of the Monon Trail and north of 161st Street.
Any questions this evening? It is a resolution this evening, so for further consideration, we need a motion and a second.
Motion to approve Resolution 24150.
Second.
A motion made by Counselor Huff, seconded by Counselor Dart. Any discussion? Seeing none, maybe we call the roll.
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Noah Heron?
Yes.
Chad Huff?
Yes.
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Kurt Waniger?
Yes.
John Dart?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Resolution 24151, which is a common counsel of the city of Westfield, Indiana, approving amendments to the declaratory resolution for the East Side Economic Development Area. Ms. Fairman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Similarly, this is an amendment to an existing economic development area. This is in the North Point Industrial Area. We have a lot of names for this particular area of the city. So, just to kind of put this in context, this is within the East Side Economic Development Area, which is kind of peppered all over the east side of US 31. It is not contiguous. We have talked previously about amendments to the East Side EDA located in the downtown area. This is all in the same economic development area, but this is a specific allocation area within North Point Industrial Park. So, this gives us an opportunity, similarly to South Park, to give us that flexibility of either providing abatements to companies that we are trying to attract and/or collect TIF, tax increment revenue, I should say, to further enhance developments that are happening in and around the North Point Industrial Area. In addition, this includes a couple of parcels that are part of the Community Health Campus, and we anticipate with 1,500 employees being estimated for their new hospital and medical office building expansion that they're doing here in Hamilton County, Westfield, that we will have a number of improvements that will need to happen within that area in order to provide upgrades to roads, utilities, other infrastructure, or to attract other businesses to the area with enhanced landscaping, lighting, et cetera. So, this really gives us an opportunity to capture that tax increment and further enhance the development within that area. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions, further discussion this evening? Seeing none, we need a motion and a second as well for this resolution this evening.
Motion to approve Resolution 24-151.
Second.
We have a motion now made by Counselor Dart, seconded by Counselor Waniger. Any further discussion? Seeing none, maybe we call the roll.
Noah Heron?
Yes.
Chad Huff?
Yes.
Victor McCarty?
Yes.
Patrick Tam?
Yes.
Kurt Waniger?
Yes.
John Dart?
Yes.
Joe Deppner?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fairman. The next three ordinances are introductions only. Ordinance 2460, which is a common counsel of the city of Westfield, Indiana, approving second addendum to the 2024 lease and reaffirming pledge of general revenue to 2024 lease rental payments. Cam, it's so great to see you.
President Tam, members of the council, nice to be with you. Cam Starnes with Taft Law outside council to the city. We are, I couldn't tell you that we saved the most interesting stuff for last, but I'm, I'm glad to move through it and talk about all three of these ordinances kind of as a group, if that's all right with you all, because they really all accomplish the same general thing. There are lease, lease premises for three outstanding series of lease rental, tax exempt lease rental bonds of the, of the city of Westfield are portions of the Grand Park property. So, each, they're 2016 series, 2018 series, and then most recently, if, if you all recall, the 2024 series that was approved, I think in the summer of this year, that refinanced the events center. Each of those have lease premises that are different portions of Grand Park. You all went through this recently, so I'm not going to rehash. Explaining lease rental bonds is always tricky, but I'll not get into the weeds on that because I know you've all been through it, but I do want to take a moment to clarify that the lease premises do not secure those bonds. They're secured by, in the case of the 2016 and 2018 bonds, pledges of local income tax revenue, and in the case of the 2024 bonds, as you, as you likely recall, they're secured by a pledge of the general revenues of the city of Westfield. So, the, the lease rental structure is there simply to avoid an implication to the city's constitutional debt limit. And so, those bond documents, the, and the approval resolutions and law, and the law all allow for amendments to those leases in the future and substitution of different lease premises and provide a mechanism for doing so. Because they're all tax-exempt bonds, there are implications, IRS implications, for the kind of activity that can go on with premises that are subject to those leases. So, whether it's the current, current operations deal being considered or a future one, knowing that there is potential, the need for flexibility in terms of how Grand Park operates in the future, taking the opportunity to amend those leases to substitute in place of portions of Grand Park unencumbered public infrastructure improvements that we've worked with Jonathan Nail to identify. They're not currently pledged to any debt, they're completed. We've valued them based on the cost of their construction. So, we'd substitute those in as, as lease premises under all three of those series of leases. So, what these ordinances do is clarify that, approve that those leases are still fair and reasonable, and reaffirm the underlying pledges of local income tax and/or general obligation of the city of Westfield moving forward. Really, again, just as, as a measure to ensure there, there's flexibility there for Grand Park in the future. These will follow the same process that was followed to approve them in the first place. The council's approval is required, as is the Redevelopment Authority and the Redevelopment Commission, which will hold a public hearing on the leases themselves. So, it's a multi-step process, this ordinance, these, these ordinances being introduced here this evening are just one step in the process for each of those three. So, any questions on, on those, those three ordinances?
Any questions for Mr. Starnes this evening?
I guess I have one. So, what if something, what if the current, like, PPA or that doesn't happen? Why are we doing this before we're certain that that is happening?
That, the timing is up to you all. We're, we're sort of presenting this as a way to kind of clear the deck, so to speak, whether it's this deal or a future deal. Any private operator that's operating on Grand Park, driving revenue that way, it could be tenants in GPEC, it could be another operations deal in the future, would have potential tax implications through the taxes and bonds. So, would you need to do it now if not for an operations deal happening? No, you could punt it. You could. But you're also not, there, there's no real downside to doing it now either, because that way you're preserved that flexibility, you don't have to cross this bridge later. So, given that it was front of mind, I think the, we're directed to present these now.
So, we're, we're allowed to use roads, I guess, as collateral? Does that mean that we're using roads as collateral, or?
You're allowed to use roads. I want to clarify, it's not collateral. So, it's, it's lease premises, the RDA owns them, leases them to the Redevelopment Commission, they pledge the lease rental payments to the bondholder. But all those are backed up, the real collateral is, for the 2016 and 2018 bonds, it's, it's local income tax. For the 2024 bonds, it's general obligation, general revenues. So, there is no sort of possessory interest, there's, there's not really implication on the real property from, like you would think in a, in a mortgage scenario.
Any other questions this evening? I do have a question for our city attorney. Effectively, Mr. Starnes just talked about all three ordinances. Do you need me to read the other two ordinances, or are we okay?
You can just say that they're all introduced for the first reading.
Okay. So, all three ordinances, including ordinance 2460, 2461, and 2462, that deals with the 2024 bond, 2016 and 2018, are introduced for the purposes of first reading this evening. We do move on. Any further conversation on those three matters? Your introduction. City council comments? Counselor McCarty?
Do my APC recap update. We met last Monday on the consent agenda. We had a few items. Grater's Ice Cream, located on a new portion of Tournament Trail just west of Dartown Road. Barca Fellers is currently in the Legends Crossing development, so welcome to Grater's. St. Marie Goretty, they're building a concession building just north of their current building. The Community Health Campus, it was given its final approval through our consent agenda, so really excited to have them be in Westfield as well. Another medical facility, Riverview Health, also located on Tournament Trail in Spring Mill Center, that's at the northeast corner of Spring Mill and State Road 32, and this in particular would be between BMO Harris Bank, that is now a tenant in one of the buildings, and then Wawa, that's currently being under-construted. Indiana's Members Credit Union, that's in a lot near Meyer, just south of Panda Express and north of Learning Experience. And then for our public hearing items, ordinance 2457, we saw that this evening. Ordinance 2455, that's the Woodwind East PUD. Had good discussion on that, looking forward to it being back at our workshop meeting next month. And then ordinance 2456, that was the Crew Car Wash that we approved tonight, and a miscellaneous item, the Westfield Yard PUD, that was withdrawn. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McCarty. Any other comments from councilors this evening? I would be remiss not to congratulate the city for a great mayor's gala. I think it was in excess of $620,000 was raised in one single evening, benefiting our nonprofits and our newly established foundation, but I'll turn that over to Ms. Tolan to talk more about that as well.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Tam, about recognizing the gala. We really appreciate everybody that could attend, attending that night. We did raise over 620,000. Numbers are still coming in as we speak, so final numbers will be presented hopefully at the next council meeting. And mentioning that. next council meeting. And mentioning the next council meeting because of early voting, on October 28th, our meeting will be held at the Westfield-Washington Public Library, so I wanted to make sure I announce that, and nothing else on my end. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Maybe we have a motion to adjourn this evening?
So moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you.